Oh girl, girl, where you at? I just wanted to make sure. What's good, what's good? Man, we back with another one, man. We just gonna go over the, um, I'm not really feeling this shit no more, bro. Now, as in, don't get me wrong, I've been doing this for years, but man, sometimes they said a complaining nigga never getting nowhere, but damn it, I just wanna rant today, bro. I just wanna rant. I'm tired, bro. I've been studying the strategy, it's a profitable strategy, but when I traded, I'm going over the statistics, but when I traded, or when I see the setup, I don't trade it, it wins, but when I see the setup, it wins, it happens too much fucking times, bro. One in five today. Negative one percent on the account, bro. I went back to point twenty-five percent, it makes better sense. I ain't trading, cuz if I traded fifty, I would've been, what, two percent instead of one? And then you don't wanna trade the account no more after two percent, usually if you lose two percent a day, you don't wanna calm down, so I try to, and I, I don't know, bro, like, this shit pisses me off, bro, it's pissed me off, cuz it's like, the shit works. Cuz every time, even when I don't take a setup, I, I, I mark it up, like, but the setups I take, I leave as in, I entered, I say I entered it, I entered, I'ma show ya, but it's like, bro, I know the strategy where I've been testing it, I tested, like, well, look at the analytics, bro, like, the analytics. Oh my god. Look at this, bro, fucking six fucking losses and no wins for fucking gold this week. Look at last, last week was barely, uh, you got fucking in six, you got three wins with four, five, six losses, that's not bad, that's not, seven losses, my fault. And that was the fifty percent, so it'd have been like point, it'd have been like point seven percent win. If that fifty didn't, if that one a fifty. I don't know, bro, this is just, it's really fucking ticking me off, bro, like, six losses? Six fucking losses? But every time I don't enter, it wins, bro? Bro? And then today, I went one for fucking drone off a tree setup. Man, I missed fucking two fucking EIs, but, and then I lose two fucking tree setups, bro. And after them two setups fucking lose, it starts winning, and when it wins three times in a fucking row. Shit don't make no fucking sense, bro, I swear to god, man. I ain't getting no fucking views, man, I'm doing this shit every day, I'm more entertaining than niggas, but it's just something about, it's, I'm in a stagnant, I've been doing this shit for, since twenty twenty, I can't even get a fucking a hundred subscribers, nigga? Writing scripts and shit, what the fuck am I writing, just keep dropping videos, just talking about bullshit? It's like, this shit is fucking, bro, I need probably go to church, the devil or something around me or something, bro. Oh my god, bro. That's how I'm starting to feel. How the fuck I got my own fucking notification, bro? I never even got this shit before, ever, i- it finally, what the fuck? They gave me my own notification. And I was, I was close to pa- I passed step one on the other account. Passed step one. Then they said I was fucking over leveraging when I was kept winning. Oh, I need god, bro. I need someone, bro, I need something, bro. I'm just not feeling it, bro, I'm not feeling it, bro. I'm not, they say come strong, trying to be F, at least, bro, I, I was so thankful, even when I was bullshitting on TikTok Live, playing Overwatch, something I didn't wanna go on. If I had one person, it would be two, one person coming every day. I'd be happy about it, that's not in my past, when I'm like, damn, I can see growth in this, I wanna keep doing it, but I stopped doing it cuz it's like, that's not who I am, I got too much information in the vault, to fucking just play the fucking video game, bro? Bro, I'm trying with this, man. I'm trying. YouTube not gonna strike me, no one watches this shit. I'm just cursing, I'm doing, man. I try to trade, man, I bought, uh, I just bought another account just cuz, fuck it, I just did. So I got two accounts I'm trading right now, this one is just a higher one, I was like, man, let me, cuz I'm on a low, I ain't gonna lie, I'm on like a low, it was like a low, like a ten K one, I'm like, ah, I know what to do. I've been testing the strategy, you know, it's a little break even on the account, but I'm like, maybe fucking, maybe, 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 may- I can't even fucking talk, bro, I'm just, I'm just disappointed, man. Or I swear, I think I need god or something, bro, I need someone, I need someone, I need something, bro. It's like, I look at numbers and I love fucking numbers, but the numbers is fucking against me! I did a segment on probability and statistics of FanDuel. I made money back in the day off of it, and I tried to do a little hundred dollar bet, or risk, you know, plus two thousand bets, I couldn't hit worth shit off any of them, I think I hit two. I hit two, I think I, I, I was at a hundred, went to like sixty, came back to ninety, went to like fifty, and I'm betting one dollars, so I'm losing like twenty, twenty-five times in a row, win one. And then I think I was at like sixty-five, so I was like negative of, almost, negative thirty-five percent, so I'm like, man, I just gave up the challenge and said, fuck it, I'mma just risk, uh, I'mma just bet on every team, whoever win the finals, I could win money, except OKC. And then that's when the Nuggets, the Celtics, I've just bet on every team, the rest of the money, and look who's in the fucking finals, OKC. The fucking luck I got, right? I bet on every team since, uh, the second round. I had Nuggets, I had, it was good odds, I had Nuggets, I had Celtics, I had Pacers, I have Knicks, I had every fucking team to win, except OKC, that was the risk, I put it in one of my polls. I took it, I, I had sixty-five dollars, I just split it all, eleven, eleven, uh, all with them niggas, um. Celtics out, Knicks about to be, it don't matter who wins, but I would win money regardless if anyone win, except OKC, so I probably lost the sixty dollars, cuz OKC might win. Fucking odds of that happening. Fucking odds, bro. Fucking odds of that happening, shit, man, it's just, oh my gosh, bro, I don't get no likes, no love. I'm not, I didn't even fucking start analyzing, I know it was so much fucking winning, like, when I be looking back, I be like, it's so much fucking wins, but I'm the one that takes the fucking Ls, man, I'mma fucking walk and punch him back, bro. There's so much shit that's stressing me out right now, bro, there's so much shit, bro. Man, I'm just thinking, bro, it's, it's not from this, it's just, it's just life, bro. This is fucking life, life flows, uh, it's like, I'm trying to be, cuz I don't like complaining, cuz complaining don't do shit, but it's like, sometimes, bro, it's just life, man. It is life, bro. Fucking life, bro, like. Trying with this shit, man. I'm doing all these numbers of tips, I be looking at this three hour streak, looking at a fucking screen, doing fucking charts and fucking statistics and analytics, saying, oh, this strategy profitable, profitable, but I can't take every setup, and when I do take the setup, it's a L, it's a L, look how much fucking Ls I had last week. You can see it, it's on a fucking screen, eleven Ls, and still fucking profitable, but damn, barely. Like, I cannot, bro, if I had a fucking eight and eight, bro, that's like four fucking percent, five percent. Eight and eight, if I just go eight and eight. And then the crazy thing is, it wins more than it lose, except the EI, that's the only one that probably don't win more. Tree wins more, EI is probably forty-five percent on gold, I tested it. Forty, it's forty-seven percent on gold, thirty-eight percent on fucking thirty, still fucking profitable, like shit. I'm looking to add a new EI pair, but I'm testing Easter, it's like, I don't know, bro, I'm, GJ look good, I might have to look for some new pairs, I don't know. I might, I might have to stop doing this fucking, writing the same fucking analytics, bro, I've been doing this for a month, bro. For a fucking month. I'm fucking stressed, bro, I'm just stressed. Let's get to it, man. No fucking views, no fucking, uh, just dropping video, good commentary, I edited. There's no point in editing, bro, when you're a low YouTuber, there's no point, just keep fucking posting and talking, that's what I'mma do. I haven't gone, it's like, it's no point, it's no point. Even about try to edit the thumbnail and shit, it's no point. It's no fucking point. It's no point, bro. It's no fucking point. Fucking spur, it's no fucking point, bro. I'm just, I don't even wanna go through this shit, bro, not going. That's what, bro, most money I made was fucking just investing in a fucking coin and just holding the shit. Shit, bro. Look at this shit, look at it, watch, look at this shit. Oh, we don't even need this. I'm not about to, I'm not about to waste all day on this shit. If you enter the EI here with a one, don't enter the EI, I tried to enter the EI here. Oh, it loses, okay, fine, it loses. Boom, boom, boom. We saw. We, we embarrassed, I'm not waiting for that. Boom, boom, no wait, boom, 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 we saw, try to, so, enter here, enter here, you were the loss. Enter here, you the one, enter here, you the loss, which I did enter. Boom, boom, then, never happened, enter here, you were the loss. Enter here, never happened, boom, enter here, never happened, enter here, never happened, enter here, I just, you the loss. Enter here, you the loss, enter here, you the loss, no, you the one, enter here, you the one, like I said. Enter here, you the one, enter here, it would've never happened, cuz it's probably not a fifty. And then, let me see, anywhere else? Maybe you wanna enter here, I don't know, it looks nasty. I don't know, you probably went into that one. This one, boom, enter here, might, not a loss. Boom, for the boss. Gold, I don't really like it on gold, so boom. Probably change your direction, you won't trade, boom, boom, wait, 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 wait. So boom, enter this, probably the one, maybe probably the one next one. So, this, this time is it four, then we can't enter this shit, I probably don't enter none of these ships. Oh my gosh, I'm just fucking tired, bro. It is so lost, 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 oh, it is kinda a lot of losses, win. Loss, loss. Uh, win. Win, win. Loss, loss, win, win. So it's probably like break even, bro. This is a, I don't know, what the fuck was this, oh, a fucking EI, boom, one, two, one, two, three, come back, enter, miss that, win. Uh, enter this, win. I just feel like the two set was a little better, man. Boom, boom, win, like this one, boom, boom, win. Boom, boom, fucking win. I don't, I don't know, bro. This is stressing me out. So much wins, now I'm about to analyze it again, I'm about to just, let me stop anal- or I already analyzed all this fucking shit, man, it ain't no, it ain't no fucking point. It's, I could've entered three back to back, no fucking point of this bullshit. Let me just write this fucking stat, bro. Like, I don't know what the fuck happened. Pissing me the fuck off, huh? I'm gonna pay for this shit anyway. Okay, it's a bit bullshit anyways. That's one. That's fine. Fucking two, too small, I wouldn't take that shit. Wouldn't take that. What else, uh, what I said? I took this one, I took, I didn't take this one, most likely I, nah, that's, I won't take that one either. That's one, okay, boom. I'll take that one. Fucking W, let's see, it might be a W, it might not. Yeah, it's a W. Certain shits, I just wanna take, like this two down was small, but you wanna count it, cause me, you know what? I counted this one, damn right, uh, let's see. So third, that first one, boom, 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 I counted it, I, I couldn't have counted this nasty shit. Nah, I won't take that one either, so I have to leave that, I'll take this one. Boom, 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 wait, wait, he the one, that's two. I'll just leave it for three, cuz that's three, but it's a, you know what, nah, I can't get that. Nah, I, I just, I just wanna take that shit, I don't know, I won't take it. I won't take that shit, I really wouldn't, I'm trying to be real, let's see, let's see, like, this one is fifty. Oh my god, okay, I'll just do this one, you can hit, probably doesn't. Probably doesn't. I'm like, look, this is what I be fucking talking about, bro. Shit I be talking about. Boom, lose that one, fine. Fine. That's not fucking seven thirty. You don't even lose that one, we gonna count it as a loss, though, fucking. We don't count that shit as a loss, fucking four, one, eight point seven, I don't know, whatever. Eight point seven times four, take the one, it's five point eight. I would've gained five point eight, tell about it, uh, dang, bro, the game, at least five per- at least fucking five point one percent. At least five point one percent in the morning, eight percent. I'm really just taking stats, like, who, who was yesterday the two shot? Why the hell I ain't take no stats for this bullshit? Who is it, twenty-eight, so this is negative two, bro, please, I got a lot. Oh my gosh, what the hell did I do? Negative two, negative two percent. What is this? Five, six, seven, eight, eight times one. Four point seven times eight, it's thirteen point six, take away about five, fifty-five, fifty-six, eight point six. Six, divide that by four. We'll get a two percent, right, you could take every tree, then zero percent, then just say zero. Come on, bro, I'm not even flipping on that bullshit. I'm already fucking upset, bro, I'm just like, let me just pass the fucking challenge, fucking four years in doing this shit. I know how to fucking trade, fucking dumb bitch. Fucking, I just looked for a little count for what? Stupid ass fucking dumb bitch, pissing me the fuck off. Oh, that's cool, man. He was thirty was good, I traded it, but I only won, I was one and two when she was thirty, I entered some bullshit over there. This shit over here, boom. One, two, three, that's three setup? Yeah, this is out of court three, probably have one, boom, boom, two, four, three, yeah. So three setups, four, four, um, I don't know, just trying to roll it, four, maybe say we do this one, we gonna take that one. So for four, one, we can say four, man, I just, I just, I'm looking. Ah, okay. See, like, I don't know, there's two string, the two strings telling me, bro, I, I really might wanna go back to two string, bro. But if it's three string, it works, I'm not even trying to, like, I don't wanna go back, but it's like, the two string, that shit hit, bro. Three string, that's a L. Wait, no L? That's a, that might be a W, it might be a L, that might be a L, Loki, that might be a L. Yeah, that's a L. L. W, yeah. Oh my gosh, bro. That's the shit I go through, hey, some just don't even stress out, that might be a L. But that's a quick one, hey, that might be a L. Yeah, I counted it, I was fucking, cuz I would probably answer that shit. I don't know. Uh, I don't know the answer. L. W. Ah, W, maybe I just have to wait till price comes up at a certain angle, bro, that's what I'm starting to think. Uh, I wanna take nothing so far, but if you do take it, it's a W, shit. You do take this, boom, boom, W. But I can see if any EIs is formed, no EIs is formed against her, so, it's a long W, bro. If you wanna take this shit, it's a W. It is a W. We just gonna have to figure out how we can make it free better. Uh, you enter, I don't know, that might be a L, might not, I don't know. Uh, uh. Two, it happened, if we left one to one, but it's not what we deserve it. One to one, so boom, 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 boom. Boom. Yeah, nothing happens, we might protect that, I would probably might take that, I might, would, I would've might've took it. Put it right here, fifty, I'm not gonna count it, though, I probably would've took it, if I took that, I would've counted it, but we're not gonna count it. Boom, 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 we can count that. It goes, it goes, boom, that's a L. It's a L. See, it's like two strings kinda hit harder, like, I ain't been trying to be on no fun, I'm not even trying to be on no funny shit. The two strings look like it's, it's more, it's super way more opportunities on the two string, but it's so much opportunity, I was hitting off the two, like, when I, when it was part nearby, it was, it was kinda the same as tree though, like, it was the same percentage, it really was. It really was, cuz, and two strings, you, it's way more fake outs, so. Like, I probably would've entered this shit, but you was a loss, so let me shut the hell up. Boom. I don't know, maybe, I, I probably went into that shit, I'm probably not to this one, uh, if it did hit, it's a loss. Didn't hit, yeah. Uh, and to, that's a W. Uh, I, I'm starting out how the, how this shit looks, uh, okay, this might've been a fucking, we could, we might protect this shit better, or, need to do it. Boom. That would've counted, one, two, two, three, two, that's an EI, you enter here. Lose, lose up the EI. Lose off the fucking EI, nothing happens. Boom, 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 boom. Any of these fucking drops to fucking hell. Yeah, I probably would have answered, yeah, I would answer it, boom. Uh, not a loss yet, now is a loss. It's too break even for me, but it does win, that's a W. Like, well, it's break even, but it's. If you take every setup shit, you you're gonna win like two, three percent. That's how I looked at it, like, man, what if EAs don't come, and then ER? I was trying to think of ER might form against her. I tried to enter, I think I tried to enter and fucking lose right here. How the fuck would I answer, oh, I did that, huh? One, two, oh, two. Too bad to die. Let's just write that, too bad to die. Pretty damn good, it's still profit, still, this shit is still, bro, can you grab this shit, like, what the fuck? Shit, dude, it's still being fucking, it's still kinda considered profitable with this, with this bullshit, like, with this fucking shit, it's still profitable. And that's, I don't know. Now I wouldn't trade this, it's too high up, but improbable one. No, don't win. Oh yeah, anyways, it'll break down, usually a way, if you hit breaks back up after this. You'll wait, 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 zoning, zoning, it's okay now. Boom, now I'm looking to answer. Boom, I'm I'm still looking to enter Loki. It is breaking out, so if it tell me if it wants to come back down, cause it broke out, uh, so. Doesn't. It goes up, I don't care, I don't know, now. I have to wait, I'm just trying to follow trend. Boom, it's still in the nasty, it's in a nasty position. Nowhere to fucking answer. Did I even answer anything? I think I start buying soon. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm probably start to go up to the box. No, I don't, I don't, what the fuck is this? It's it's three? You don't take none of this. None of this, don't. You, I, you say, you did wanna sell. You did wanna sell, the most you can do is this one. And it it loses, so this one, it loses this one. It wins. So one, one and two. I'm gonna sell again, this one wins. That's two and two, gonna go two and two, fine. Like I said, all right, let's see, let's be realistic, two, uh, boom. Uh, so all right, L, this, this one L, so boom, it comes here. One, boom, boom, that's a one to one, two, boom, boom, boom. You might could get at most, oh shit, there's not really one. Oh, this one, boom, 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 boom. At most you could get this one, at most, at most you could do this one. So I could say W for that, I'm not counting any other one, if I, if you wanna trade that, if I really write everyone. To be honest, if I write everyone, fine, let's do everyone, you the lost twice and you the one twice, so. Shit, let's, you right, let's just write everyone, so boom, you the one, this one, and you the one, this one. So two and two, so one, two. One, two. Three or five, three. Loki. Opera, I, I, it's like, I'm trying to see, but I wouldn't trade this shit. It's too, I don't know what what direction it's going. Like, like now it's starting to go. I buy, if I lose, I lose. Boom, boom, okay, that's one. I'll see why I be losing, this shit is too, it's too nasty. Uh, what is this? I'm just, I'm really stretching this, dude. That's a L. I'm gonna fuck a tree or something. What time is it? Four, I'll probably be done. I'll probably be done, but let's see if this wins. So, I don't know, I'm gonna go four, one, one. No, uh, was it ER formed against us, Loki, Loki, no. Man, I probably would have sold right here, cause I'm still selling, I'll see this right here, yeah, I would have sold it, so two and two. I would not sell that shit, though. Hmm, probably profitable, taking all these shits, but. Oh, let's see, all right, let's, let's pull out the count. I don't know, I don't feel motivated, bro, I was gonna make a fucking video after this. I don't feel motivated, bro. Like my spirit is getting crushed, bro. Two, seven, eight. Two point six, still fucking profitable, like I said, but it's like, fuck. Probably have been point five percent taking all these shits, and then, yeah. That's the only thing about tree. It's not the fact, like. It's the fact, look, four, four, you take four, okay, fine, I might have to test GJ, bro, for EAs, cuz. I could catch way more EAs off. I'm not really fond on EAs or third, I'm fond on trees, and trees happen way more on trees, but look at this. You could, although if you just enter, like I said, you enter four and just lost all four. Which I won one and lost two, okay, fine. I really wanna touch GJ, bro. I was like. I really think this shit could be. It's like, it moves like, kinda like gold, so like. Look at the, look, look at this shit, man. One. No, that's, I don't like that shit. Man, I'm trying to see the good E, where the fuck is a good ER, I think, uh. I don't actually like this ER. All right, all right, there's a, there's a clean ER, there's a clean ER. So let me see, wait, one. Two. Two, breaks out. Three, comes out, comes out, comes in. Wicks here, come out, come here, fifty percent, comes in, fifty, boom. One, two, three, wait, comes out, breaks in, comes here. GJ could be one, I will be testing GJ for EAs, cuz ER kinda happens more on gold. Higher percentage on gold, I noticed it, cuz it's like, you wait, just wait for it to touch. Just look at GJ. I have to go back to the four experience, one, two, three, fifty. Fifty, enter, enter. Hmm, all right, yeah, one, two, three. Three, fifty, comes up, and, oh my god, DJ, what the fuck? DJ actually look good. I'm trying to see more opportunities. One, two, three, come here, enter, it's one, loses, okay. You know what? A one, two, three, comes up. Down, one, two, three, wait, wait, never happens, comes up, wait, uh, here, enter, wait. Loses, goes up. Gee, I ain't gonna lie, GJ look fucking good. For EAs, hell yeah. Uh, I don't know, that's a ball. So one, two, three, it's up, two, four. Fuck this out. Well, one, comes here, never comes back down, one, one, wicks here. You buy one. One, two, three, comes here, comes here, no one, mitigated, go. I'm not gonna lie, I like GJ. I do, I always looked at, I remember trading GJ, GJ and gold, you just had to find a way to how, learn how to trade it, it's like. ER, eh, tree doesn't work on gold, tree wouldn't work on this shit either, but tree. Is a mitigation, as in, look how much range in this shit does, but if it. Bop, smack a spot three times, I am willing to enter it. Or thing, and then it wakes up and then doesn't break the spot again, I'm willing. You know, enter it, all right, look, mitigation, break, hit, it doesn't wanna break here. Comes up, enter, comes up, doesn't break here, enter here, weekend. Weekend, yeah, I think it loses, but it does happen more often than not. Mitigation, mitigation five, boom, 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 highest it hits is here, loses, go. Okay, fine. I see more. I'm, you gotta study, bro. Maybe fucking, um, fucking, I gotta go back to a four experience. One, two, comes out, mitigation. mitigation, sell, comes out. Sell, no property, roll. One, two, three. Three comes up, mitigation comes up, mitigation comes here, and so wins. I don't know, I just, I think I just need to do a study session Friday, bro, this look at like different, like, I could do it now, it's like it. I I'm just taking fucking stats. For some odd reason, I'm thinking four experience is better, bro. I don't know why. It just look more appealing to the fucking eye. Maybe I do gotta switch, like I said, gold with ER, I don't, I'm not trying to be on no funny shit. Maybe this is. I'm, I'm starting to notice, trade what you're good at, uh. I don't have a problem with gold, gold, I, the tree, like, if I do gold only. I probably look like US thirty, if I, I enter a tree, I would. Cuz thirty, the tree never really kinda did me wrong, never did, really. Thirty, gold, ER, happens more often, it's forty percent, it's probably about fifty percent chance it's gonna hit. GJ look like it, tree for this, let's see, oh, comes up, wait. I I think I just wanna look at more errors, bro. I really do, I think I wanna get to a point where if. Like, look, this is, uh, now is nasty. So, comes up, mitigated, so, comes up, lose. So, comes up, lose, so. So, comes up, probably want to, so. Win, so, comes, lose. Misranging, so it's, it will be nasty. Okay, let's go. Comes here, buy, win, mitigated. Don't enter. Boom, comes up. Comes back up, comes here, comes here, win, so, comes here, win, so, comes here, lose. Probably gonna take that. Probably won't take that, comes back, coming all the way back up, wicks. Try to sell one more time, comes here, comes up, sell. Comes up, sell. So. Fucking rules, sorry, we changed the bar, come here, don't take, come here, come here, win, mitigated. So, probably wanna take, probably wanna take, probably wanna take, buy, come here. Probably win, it will win. Buy, comes here, probably doesn't even answer, buy, come here, don't answer. Do, 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 buy, comes here, loses. Buy, come here, loses, buy, come here, win, win, oh, buy, I probably wanna take that, but. Shit, it doesn't even move, oh. Oh, yeah, loses. It loses, cuz it, it look like it drops at all, doesn't drop, but probably too late. I'm not gonna change, bro. If, if Simon could show me a better result, I, I leave thirty, thirty ain't nothing to me, thirty is just. This randomization of the one minute, thirty is not really. This shit not helping me, bro, it's not. I feel like it's way more fake outs. I feel like. These just periods I'm gonna look at over the weekend, bro, I think I'm gonna just do a deep dive of studying. I don't really wanna look at that, no. GJ, nah, I don't wanna look at that, no. See, I'm looking at this Aussie dollar, Ted, Canadian, I don't give a fuck. I could see GB, uh. I just wanna look at. I just wanna see. Alright, ooh, this is nasty, this is fucking nasty, uh-uh, I don't like this. This shit probably runs all day though, uh, that's a nice turn, this is nice, enter. This is nice, right, yeah. It's pretty, pretty okay. I just wanna look at these two. Cuz gold, like, in all honesty, I don't see nothing special about thirty, as of right now, I just don't. It's still a point, okay, it is profitable, but I'm not taking every set of, well, to be profitable, gold, I'm not really. I'm kinda scared to, I wouldn't drop gold cuz gold is showing me a, a obligation of. This shit helped me pass two challenges already, off EI system. That's the first thing I created, I created these other systems cuz I'm like, man, what if I don't wanna wait all day, so I could just. A quick entry, but it's probably no such thing as a quick entry, and. If I could just find EIs and other fucking. Jones, I'll probably just take EIs and just say fuck all these other shits. Or even this better tree. This shit, I don't know, bro. I'm trying to make a video, but. I'm about to just run through this bitch, I don't really, I don't wanna do, it's like I'm doing the same thing over to. Hopefully, I hope, I pray to God tomorrow, go, I like, I'm, I'm really praying to God. Please, let, let me at least, go, fuck, break even, I'm asking for too little. Let me at least get to one percent tomorrow, one percent, so I'm asking for two percent tomorrow, basically, cuz I'm already down there with one. Give me the two percent, give me back to one percent above the hum, that's all I'm asking for. And that should happen quick, EI, EI system, that's, that's a, that's almost a fucking one. Probably, it's almost a one, five point eight, tree. Tree probably like a. Win rate, probably like a, it's probably like a point forty-five, point four-two. Or point four-two, point four, if I can get five trees, three and two. Uh, three and two, that's like, point seven percent, EI. Point, eh, that's one point seven, if I could go three and two, two EIs, win-loss with. Fucking six trees or three and three, that's still fucking. What is that, whoa, one, that's still like two point five. I said three and three, two, five, that's still one point. Oh, five, still one point two, five percent, but. Shit, I don't know, man, I don't know, maybe, may- maybe I could just win five, like I lost fucking five, lo- lost fucking. All these fucking trades in a fucking room, stupid ass fucking game, huh, fucking bitch, bro, I'm just tired of this shit. Uh, uh, let's, let's just go. I just started to do this shit. I don't over know if this one. I'd rather get in the shower, bro, I feel so fucking itchy. Been to the gym, bitches, man, bitches up there talking and shit, nigga, I'm trying to figure out my fucking money. Like, I don't know how niggas could sit around and be like, talk about bitches and, uh, and. Ways to get them and shit, man, I, you know, some shit we got shit, nigga. I don't care about no fucking bitches, this bitch is gonna fucking come, I care about a fucking statistic of this fucking trading shit. Shit not gonna, fucking a bitch not gonna make me happy, he talk about it, don't, you know. Just don't make me happy, bro. You gotta have something going on for yourself, nigga, man, I be seeing YouTube's blow, I'm falling out, I'm hating. Fucking, I'm having a hate mystery. Seeing YouTube blowing up, all you do is talk about bitches and how mom, and you drop a video every day talking about bitches and how they bad for the. Man, get your gay ass out of my fucking face, fucking gay ass nigga. Bunch of niggas make a video every day talking about how bitches are demons and going to the club and shit, get that fucking gay shit out my fucking face. Or do something, bro, do something more productive, nigga, go fix your fucking pipe, fuck nigga. Tired of these niggas. Fucking, was, was, I don't even know what, what pill is for red, black, I don't know any of them pills, I just know that's what they call them. And they fucking gay. It's like they try to teach the men the right thing, but they just not, they teaching men that fucking hate one. And I get it, it's fucking simps, but shut the fuck up, I don't care. I don't care for this, someone gives a fuck, stop trying to teach the game to the simp. That's what you really trying to do, making sense, trying to be this hard nigga, wish they not, let him be simp. I don't know what the fuck I'm talking, I don't know what the hell I'm trading. You see gold be losing off like trees and shit, it's, it's more good for like EIs, bro, I've been doing. I feel more safer trading this way, I'm not trying to do no funny shit. I ain't gonna count that one, I'll probably miss that, come here, probably do that, come here, yeah, so, one, one. I'm about to just eyeball it, fuck it, cuz I already, I've been doing this for months, I could just eyeball it. I don't know, is this fucking, uh. Probably profitable for today, barely, what is it, the rule, one point seven, one point seven, uh. One point seven, three point one, times one point seven, four point eight, probably twenty-five percent, if it's three and four, it's still up. Not one percent, but it's probably done for today. Go to tree, I feel like the tree is like, ooh, but. I don't know, maybe, I, I think it would. No, I probably would've traded for the EIs, I think I did do this one, yeah. This one, where it's for EIs, and I was actually trying to trade this way. Did I count this one, Roger, Roger. Yeah, I, I think you're right, I don't know. I don't know, I'm just, I'm fucking itchy. I gotta take a shower, bro. First thing. What the fuck was that, is this kind of part of the EIs? Uh, no, not yet, cuz it ain't push out, all right, so, yeah, I encountered the EIs. That's a push out. I don't know about the. One, two, three, that's better than. End three. End three, end three. I didn't answer this shit? No, okay, okay, now, I was about to say. I did answer this, I think I did, this right here, yo. I'm saying, why the fuck I didn't answer this? I'm like, cuz they can't break here, but. That was a crazy thing. This was one, but yeah. I remember when I used to do EIs like that, I used to just answer off the first one. I feel like that shit wins more, huh, like. I'm gonna have to go back to that shit, like even this, if it comes here, wait. They wins, but that shit took a long time, so, so, enter eight. Eight thirty, okay, okay, if I just close my phone, that's not bad, though, I used to answer off that shit, I would've won twice. Well, I don't know, cuz I, I was afraid I kept losing, but I don't know, maybe, and then. And then if I answered all finger, I would've won too. Nah, I won't, I won't answer off this, but this one, I'm gonna have to look back on, let's just say, I don't know. I don't wanna put it up, I don't, cuz I didn't do it, if I did it, I would. I would've counted, oh, I probably did count that. Even so, I just, I just pushed this down a little bit. Boom, 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 how it come, how it come, wait. Mm-hmm, I'll probably do that. I'll probably, wait, enter, lose, I see this one, enter, win, so one and one. Probably win, I don't think that's a W though, that might be a W. Oh, not W? I don't know, one and one again. What the fuck did I just do? You know what, I don't remember, but I said I won. I answered this one, didn't answer this one, huh. Yup, 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 yup. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, cuz it came up, came up, uh, answer, gonna answer it again, look there. Is this, this might have came in, though. I hate when it does that. Oh, this one should be more after, after crazy thing. Oh, W, this one is just going back and forth. Uh, where the fuck did I lose from? I must've started out lose on gold, three, one, two, three. Four, damn. Nah, did I lose four times? I don't wanna look back on it, I'll just look at this shit. I was three times, I just forgot about it, three shit, I know it took this one, I know it took this one. I think I took this one, I'm not too sure, I don't think I took that one. I don't have to show, I don't think I took this shit, I ain't gonna lie, I ain't gonna hold you. I lost twice on the thing, but I was only five today. One, two. One, two. I'm just speeding through this shit, fuck it. So on. One, one. Probably wanna take that, one, one, probably wanna take that E, what time is it? Two thirty, probably, it depends a couple more, let's see. I don't like who is that, though, let's just speed it up. Boom, I'll wait, I'm on. Like seven, like raws off a little bit. Probably answer that, good at those, man. I don't know. What time is it, it's probably six, uh, okay. What time is it, it's probably six, uh, okay, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, okay. So, same result. Three fucking Ws, but I just. I'm just having the worst luck, look, it's a fifty percent win rate, but shit. It's, it really, tree is really a fifty percent win rate, but it's a one point seven, so it's really a good strategy, but if you don't win. That's what I'm saying, four. Eight. So eight out of nine, you probably positive, you are a positive, man. One point seven times three, take away nine, four point six percent. Four point six, I wish I just had a fucking, don't, I could just take every fucking shit, I'm not trying to do funny, no kind of shit. One point seven times three, take away four, equals one point one percent, one point one. One point one percent, I'm getting my ass in a shovel, I already did enough rank, and I don't really like ranking too much, so. Let's say, two point three, let's say two point three percent, two point three percent. Yeah. That's, that's it, fucking, that's crazy, go, let's eat thirty. Negative, one, two, five, thirty. Now the thirty was better, gold was better, I just caught all the losses, but. That's what it is, yeah, really could've been a fucking two, two, but. I don't know, like, comment, subscribe, and I guess I, hopefully I'll do better tomorrow.